We're gonna call this meeting of the Landale City Council to a order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give us the roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Osborne?
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Our pledge of allegiance, our fleshy would be held by Councilman Pat Kearney. And I'm gonna ask Pastor Bob Dubrinsky to give us a word of inspiration from the way of God church.
Fisher, write it over your heart and repeat along with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you remain standing?
Let us pray. Lord, we pray that all who are here will be thankful for all that they have. Lord, we just asked them to count their blessings one by one. We thank you for the leadership in Landale, for the sheriff's departments. We pray that they do their work effectively. And Lord, we are thankful that we are able to walk down the streets in safety. And being thankful, Lord, means to go through life without grumbling and complaining. And all God's people said, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Okay. Let's have, let's have our public safety report. Lieutenant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for April 1st through April 14th. On April 2nd, approximately 4:30 in the morning, Deputy John Stewart conducted a traffic stop on Prairie regarding expired registrations. After contacting the female driver, the driver admitted to possessing methamphetamine. While searching the vehicle for the narcotics, Deputy Stewart recovered a loaded firearm. A short time later, he discovered the white powdery substance resembling methamphetamine. The driver admitted that the narcotics and handgun was hers. Based on that, she was placed under arrest for possession of a controlled substance while armed and possession of a loaded firearm in a vehicle by a person other than the registered owner. On April 8th, approximately 11:00 in the morning, Deputy Raymond Johnson stopped a bicyclist pulling a small trailer riding on Inglewood and 153rd Place. On April 2nd, approximately 4:30 in the morning, Deputy John Stewart conducted a traffic stop on Prairie regarding expired registrations. After contacting the female driver, the driver admitted to possessing methamphetamine. While searching the vehicle for the narcotics, Deputy Stewart recovered a loaded firearm. A short time later, he discovered the white powdery substance resembling methamphetamine. The driver admitted that the narcotics and handgun was hers. Based on that, she was placed under arrest for possession of a controlled substance while armed and possession of a loaded firearm in a vehicle by a person other than the registered owner. On April 8th, approximately 11:00 in the morning, Deputy Raymond Johnson stopped a bicyclist pulling a small trailer riding on Inglewood and 153rd Place. The rider attempted to disassociate himself with the little trailer that he was pulling. So when Deputy Johnson contacted him, he observed that inside the trailer were speakers, equalizers, a small laptop. The items appear to be in excellent condition. The bicyclist stated that he found the items in the trash. Deputy inquired further and based on conflicting statements, the fact that these items were brand new and they're in the trash, he arrested the person for reasonable cause possession of stolen property. So in that case, the detective fines a victim later on through the process. So he was arrested for that. Also, on April 9th at 1:30 PM, Deputy Raymond Johnson also conducted a traffic stop at Marine and Prairie regarding another expired registration on a vehicle. He contacted the driver and Deputy Stewart contacted two occupants. It was determined that the driver was never issued a license. He had just been released from prison. And, yeah, I'm sorry, he was released from prison for driving a stolen vehicle. And he was on probation for criminal threats. Deputy Johnson saw that when he had the suspect exit the vehicle, he saw that there was clear baggies of a white crystal-like substance resembling methamphetamine. He asked if this car was stolen. The driver said no, but however, he had no proof of ownership of the vehicle. Both the other passengers gave conflicting statements on who owned the vehicle. So Deputy Johnson arrested the driver for reasonable cause, possibly driving a stolen vehicle, and the two occupants for the methamphetamine. Also, I'm pleased to announce that the sheriff has made a selection for the captain of South LA Station. He will, Mr. Captain Dwayne Allen will start Sunday on the 21st. I will talk to him immediately regarding finding a service area lieutenant immediately to service Landale. Open up the communications between the council and the residents. And that's all I have. And happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions after the lieutenant's report?
No questions. Thank you.
I do. Quick, we were given a bio on the new appointee. Will he be at the next meeting?
He will be at the next meeting, yes.
Okay, so we'll get to see him there if not before.
Yes.
That's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for that report and reporting that there's a new captain in town. I want to thank Councilmember Pat Kearney and City Manager Stephen Madoki for sitting in on the panel to select a new captain. As you know, the captain is not only the captain for the city of Landale but for the region as well, which includes some of the unincorporated areas of LA County.
South Station.
South Station is what they call Station in the Athens area. Okay, with that, we'll move our agenda and we will ask the city clerk for anything from the clerk's office.
I just have one item this evening that I just wanted to remind residents that we still have vacancies in the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee and the Beautification Committee. If you're interested in getting involved in your community, please visit the city clerk's office to learn more about applying. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Next item on our agenda is oral communications. Oral communications, when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to do so, we ask that you line up by the flag when it becomes your turn. If you would come to the podium, if you would start with your name first. At about 2 minutes, the amber light will come on. That gives you the signal to start wrapping things up. Yes, sir. You're next.
How you folks doing?
Fine, thank you.
First of all, I'd like to apologize. The last time I was here, I had a little outburst. And I'd like to apologize for that. On 3/21/2019, I received a letter from the code enforcement telling me that I need to remove a pile of dirt from my parking-
A little bit more and speak directly into it for me. Thank you.
From my parking spot. So he told, the letter states that I needed to go to Building and Safety to obtain a permit to bring it up to code and get rid of the dirt and also the pavers off the parkway. Excuse me. So I immediately started to do that. I got the pavers out. I got it ready for sod. I hired somebody to pull, take all the dirt. It averages about $500 a dump truck load. They took four dump truck loads. I was very grateful. I went to the city and got the flatwork permit. And they told me at the desk that I need to get rid of the dirt and, you know, do what, you know, comply. So I started doing that. And I went, I called on the 10th to City Hall, let them know that, or to Building and Safety, let them know that I got rid of the dirt and the parkway was on the verge of getting done. And the young lady very politely told me that I wasn't gonna be able to use that parking spot after all. I was disappointed. It cost me a bit of money and now I don't have the dirt to put back, the backfill there. But, you know, I just thought I'd bring it to your attention. I don't think I have to say anymore. I want to thank you all for what you do for the city of Landale. Like you guys know, I've been here for quite a few years and you guys have to do what's right. I understand. And once again, I apologize for last time. Have a nice evening.
You're welcome. No problem. Thank you, sir.
Pam London, grumbler, complainer. Recently, I read a story about property values. This is their second, their number two reason for lower property values. Sometimes the factors that affect your home's value have nothing to do with your property at all. One such example is a zombie house in your neighborhood. Zombie houses are abandoned, neglected, or dilapidated homes with overgrown yards. They can really hurt the value of neighboring homes. That was their words, not mine. Landale is full of them. Business owners could cite this as an example of a decline in their business. Customers see the surrounding area and become fearful to do business here. Drive down Inglewood from Manhattan Beach Boulevard to Artesia. Parkways do not exist in front of businesses. Most of the parkways adjacent to residential have tall weeds. A real vision. Weeds to your knees. This scene is confirmation to others that the city does not care. Residents do not care. When people buy property in this city, knowing there is a code case, which they could choose not to buy that property, the city sits back and waits for two years on one property in particular before that person started the process, even though that was a building and safety violation issue. Then someone buys a property with tall bushes. They were, again, before signing on that dotted line, they were given the information that this is now a code violation. They come to the city to complain and the city council agrees that, you know, because of their children, maybe they should be allowed to keep their hedge. But yet, the city itself has a code allowing for a four-foot fence to keep their little kids in their yard. So instead of citing code and agreeing with the city's own code, y'all wanted the city to look into their problem a little bit more. Those two people choose to buy homes with code cases. They could have bought elsewhere. My complaint is not about these people, not at all, but the city's double standard and inability to cite and follow their own code. You people choose to ignore this, that lends itself to the belief that you do not care about the appearance of your city. So prove me wrong. Please. Show you care.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Jan Hoff. I'm a resident of Landale and-
Put that mic up for me just a little. Maybe it keeps falling down a little bit. Speak right into it for me. There you go. Thank you.
Testing. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not a homeowner. I'm a renter. And I'm not even a US citizen, actually. But I, the parking is so bad where I live that we have to park like two blocks away, you know, half the time. And I see people on the street where I live park where there is, between the driveways, where there is enough space for two cars, they'll take up the whole space with one car. Sometimes they save it for somebody, you know, or they're just ignorant, you know. So I think there ought to be a law, and this could generate, you know, income for the city, really. There ought to be a law that you have to park no more than a foot or a foot and a half from the driveway. You know, where the curb starts to slant, right there, the top of the slant, that's the mark where you should not park beyond. And if you park a foot and a half or further back than a foot and a half, there ought to be, there should be ticketed. And another solution would be to make, for the city, to make some official-looking flyers, you know, like a quarter of a page little flyer that could be free to the residents that we could pick up here, maybe, that says that please do not take up two parking spaces. Because I don't want to do this on my own. I mean, I've done it a couple of times. But, you know, people are belligerent. They're vindictive, you know. If I put a personal note on somebody's car, oops, they might do some vandalism on my car or something. So I just think it would be a good idea to enforce this parking regulation that people should have to park no more than a foot away from the driveway. That way, it's gonna open up a lot of parking spaces.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We'll make some comments once everyone had the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I just wanted to take the chance to introduce myself. My name is Jessica Romero and I am the relatively new library manager at the Landale Library. I've come to a couple of city council meetings and with the encouragement of Mr. Osborne, who encouraged me to introduce myself, that's what I want to do. I also want to highlight a couple of programs that we're having coming up. So a few things we're having coming up is parent-child workshops. And those are gonna take place Saturdays. We've already gone through two, started April 6th, but they end May 4th. And they're gonna be from 10:30 to 11:45. And they're just a program where parents and their children can play and learn together. And we have resource specialists that, from the community, that come and answer any questions in terms of child development. Like last week, we had someone on nutrition. The week before that, we had someone talking about positive parenting. So we encourage all of our parents in Landale to come out to that. We also have, let's see. Oh, we have a resume writing and interviewing workshop. That's gonna be tomorrow from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. And that's just, we're gonna have someone come in and talk a little bit about, you know, how to spruce up that resume and a few interview tips. And this is, you know, for teenagers and adults alike. Another program that I would like to highlight is Yoga for Teens. And that's gonna be Thursday, May 9th from 4:00 to 5:00. We just want to encourage our teens to come back out. We have a brand-new teen adult librarian who just started two weeks ago. And I know she's super excited to start getting the teens back into the library. I'm really, really excited to be here. I started in January, so it's been a little while. And we've, you know, I've been learning, relearning the community because I actually started at this library as a part-time staff member 10 years ago. So it's really exciting for me to be back now in a management capacity. So I'm excited with the team that I have here working with me and you guys will be seeing me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello there. Johnny London, longtime advocate of trying to clean up this city. I've been coming here for eight years at least, talking to the leaders of our city, the city council. You could call it constructive criticism. You could call it complaining. You could call it bitching. And now you could call it grumbling. You could call it anything you want because you're not listening. Leadership starts at the top. That's you guys up there. That moniker behind you, it says, "The heart of the South Bay." Well, like the 45th said, this city looks like a shithole. Let's be real. Cars pulled up in the front yard in front of their front door. Cars pulled up in their front yards. Weeds two to three feet tall in the front yards and the side yards. Tarps on their roofs, falling apart after being there forever. Outside of just letting your property go to shit, listen or read my lips. I dare or challenge you to reply, or better yet, do something about it. Lead by example. Like I said, leadership starts with you up there. Obviously, they're not listening to the few of us who speak up at city council meetings. Since you don't want this city to be proactive when it comes to maintaining properties, I challenge all of you up there to be reactive. Everybody up there walked or drove to this meeting. Nobody up there is Stevie Wonder. So as you drive around, take notes on addresses or record them on your iPhone. Be reactive. Lead by example, or give the heart of the South Bay to a deserving city. I know you don't want to hear about Manhattan Beach, Ramos Beach, Redondo Beach, but if some idiot parks their car in the front yard or in front of their front door, they're going to do something about it. Like I said, I challenge you to lead this city and vote to make it proactive, especially when it means cleaning up the city. Or give that moniker, "Because we are not the heart of the South Bay, not now." I said, "I dare and I challenge you to clean up the city." So please reply.
Thank you, sir. Are there any else wishing to speak to this body? And we appreciate you, Mr. London, keeping it down to a two swear words maximum. We appreciate that. All right. Okay, let's see if we have any comments by the council. Let's start with them, Councilman Daniel Reed.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, everyone who spoke. Couple of different topics on the piece. Jessica, thank you for the updates from the library. Appreciate that. And, you know, Johnny, I'll respond, you know. Yes, there are houses with weeds, but leading by example. Mine doesn't, you know. And I do talk to people along my neighborhood that have it. You know, as far as the rest, I'm gonna step out for now and pass it on.
Okay. Pat Kearney?
I just want to welcome Jessica to the city of Landale. And Johnny, I do walk the city and I do turn in several cases to our planning, our municipal services. I just had my house appraised last week. It was my two neighbors on left and right, both had weeds, probably up to the podium. And we came back $65,000 higher than we did two years ago. So property values have not gone down. They have gone up. Even with the trashy neighbors left and right, it still goes up. And with that, I pass it on to my colleague to my right.
She asked for Ms. Suarez.
Thank you to everybody that came out tonight. I just wanted to touch base. We had someone mention the parking. And I think we had discussed along the street parking. I don't think there was a way that we could really regulate that.
Right, not really. The only thing you would do would be to mark spots. But when that was studied by the council years ago, it was determined that because of different vehicle lengths, that that would actually be inefficient and would provide less spots than if people just fit in where they can.
And I don't think he's here, but we kept mentioning too about the, how the state wants us to kind of eliminate cars altogether. So it's one of those things that it's, I don't know how much we'll really have control over that in the future. And then I also did want to thank Jessica for making it out tonight. We've been a little bit of a while without, you know, those updates. So it's nice to see someone back in that role. And I just want to pass it along. Thank you to everybody that came out.
Pro Tim Osborne?
Thank you, Robert. Okay. You guys, as usual, covered most of it. But yeah, welcome, Jessica, and thanks for coming out. And look forward to all the new programs that continue to pop up at the library. And what they were just talking about with that parking space, yeah, that's just, it's a problem that's never- You'd think people would have common sense. It would pull up and realize somebody may want to park in the second space and fit it right, but you can't force it. Anyway, go ahead, Robert.
Okay, thank you. And yes, I want to welcome you as well, Jessica, and thank you for those updates. And we look forward to hearing the updates and what's going on at the library, all the wonderful programs at the library. So thank you once again for coming tonight. Mr. London, thank you for your observations. We take that under consideration. Also, as you mentioned, the, you know, the parking in the middle of the curb. Now, he did mention, the gentleman did mention about that they should not be able to park in the middle. And you indicated, Madam City Attorney, that unless we had the actual stripes or stalls or what have you. But when does it consider to be, so we can't force, so you're saying we can't force them to- I know it might be harder to regulate, but I'm just, not with the regulation part.
Right, if you mark the stall spots, then people would have to park within those stall spots or they could get a ticket. But if you don't have them marked, there's nothing else you can do. And that's also how you put people on notice that that's what the requirement is.
So how is it that you can cite someone for parking too far from the curb when you don't have marks?
Well, that's just the state law, so that the travel lanes are passable.
No, sometimes people park outside.
Right, but that's a uniform state law everywhere.
Okay, but you can regulate that, but you can't regulate them-
Well, that's a state law. That's not anything that we have control over. That's a vehicle protection.
Okay, okay. Okay, yeah, okay. So that's all I have on the public comments. That gentleman left. Okay.
Yeah, he took all.
Did I miss something on the public comments? I think I addressed everything. I got everything? Yeah, we talked about, yeah, I think Mr. Pat Kearney covered the fact that we do report properties. And just like Mr. Kearney, I walk around pretty much every Saturday or Sunday. And the staff will tell you, they do get photographs and things that nature-
I sent in pictures of a transient camp and a broken branch over on 149 today. It happens every day. Just because they say it doesn't, doesn't mean it happens.
And I saw the guy on, it might have been a different fellow on a bicycle with a trailer. But it's Sunday, I saw another guy on a bicycle with a little trailer. Actually, I think it was actually probably more like, I think it was a shopping cart or what have you. And he had all this stuff in there and he was trying to navigate through the, you know, the ramp, you know, the, what's called it? You know, that yellow strip?
The handicap.
The handicap strip, what have you, and wasted all his stuff, like, everywhere. So I don't know if that's the same fellow or not, or whatever, but it was just kind of colorful. And then there was another fellow that was, I guess he was a budding musician.
Right, if you mark the stall spots, then people would have to park within those stall spots, or they could get a ticket. But if you don't have them marked, there's nothing else you can do. And that's also how you put people on notice that that's what their requirement is.
So how is it that you can, can cite someone for parking too far from the curb when you don't have marks?
Well, that's just the state law, so that the travel lanes are passable.
No, sometimes people park outside.
Right, but that's a uniform state law everywhere.
Okay, but you can regulate that, but you can't regulate them?
Well, that's a state law. That's not anything that we have control over. That's a vehicle protection.
Okay, okay.
We could try to mark it, but every curb is a different length.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, okay, so that's all I have on the public comments. That gentleman left.
Yeah, he took all.
Did I miss something on the public comments? I think I addressed everything. I got everything? Yeah, we talked about, yeah, I think Ms. Pat Kearney covered the fact that we do report properties, and just like Mr. Kearney, I walk around pretty much every Saturday or Sunday, and the staff will tell you, they do get photographs and things that nature.
I sent in pictures of a transient camp and a broken branch over on One Forty-Ninth today. It happens every day. Just because they say it doesn't, doesn't mean it happens.
And I saw the guy on the, it might have been a different fellow on a bicycle with a trailer, but it's Sunday, I saw another guy. On a bicycle with a little trailer. Actually, I think it was actually probably more like a, I think it was a shopping cart or what have you, and he had all this stuff in there, and he was trying to navigate through the, you know, the ramp, you know, the, what's called, you know, that yellow strip?
The handicap.
The handicap strip or what have you, and wasted all his stuff, like, everywhere. So that's the same fellow or not, or whatever, but it was just kind of colorful. And then there was another fellow that was, I guess he was a budding musician, and he was walking around with his guitar, and he also had a.
I saw that guy.
A pet coat. You saw him, and I actually walked around with him for about twenty minutes, just talking to him, what have you, and it was just.
He was a vagabond. He was traveling around with his guitar.
Okay, so that's public comments. So thank everyone who spoke tonight, so let's move our agenda. Okay, where are we in the process? We are on item number G. Letter G, rather. This is our consent calendar, and we do have two items that I'm going to ask the city attorney to read, should we adopt this consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent?
If there's no additions, subtractions, I make a motion to accept.
Okay, with that being the case?
And I'll second.
And it was second, okay, second, seconded by, made by Kearney. I'm going to ask the city attorney to read item number two and three.
Item two is ordinance number one-one-five-seven-dash-one-nine, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Landale, California, adding Landale Municipal Code Chapter twelve point sixty-four, establishing rules and regulations on shared mobility devices. And item three is ordinance number one-one-five-nine-dash-one-nine, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Landale, California, adding Chapter twelve point sixty of the Landale Municipal Code to regulate wireless telecommunications facilities in the public right-of-way and finding of exemption from CQ. Thank you.
Okay. Without any further discussion, the council please vote on the consent calendar.
Motion approved unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number eight, the administration's comprehensive annual financial report. Do you want to introduce the gentleman, Marla, as our auditor?
This is the partner from L S L, our CPA firm, to give us basically an update on our fiscal year, June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, comprehensive annual financial report.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Rich Kikuchi, and I'm here representing L S L CPAs, your auditors. I'm a partner with the firm, and I'm the engagement partner overseeing this audit. So L S L's been engaged to perform what's called a financial audit, which really, the goal of it is that we would render an opinion on your financial statements at the end of every fiscal year. And your financial statements basically are a financial snapshot of the financial summary of the city. And so you have all gotten a copy, and I'm here to kind of present the June thirty-two thousand and eighteen financial statements. Our audit was done in two phases. In total, we spent about four hundred hours on your audit, so it was pretty lengthy. We came out in the spring, and we, at that time, we conducted what we call our interim audit, and we did a lot of assessment of your internal controls, did interviews of the city, registered city minutes, and a lot of it was planning for when we came back out in the fall. Actually, we came back out in December, and at that time, we did detailed account analysis, different types of audit procedures. The goal was to do enough test work so that I would feel comfortable that the amounts in those statements that you received are materially correct, that you can make management decisions based on those amounts. And so I'm happy to announce that we've issued what's called an unmodified opinion based on the audit, so that basically, that's what you want, that it's, you know, it was a good audit, and there was no modifications necessary to my opinion. Don't know if you got a chance to take a look at the financial statements, but on page six, it starts off, that's where the financial statements start off, and there we had what's called the statement of net position. There, at the bottom, we see that the total net position was just a little over seventy million dollars, okay? And that's citywide. Those are your citywide financial statements. The general fund is always, you know, that's the highlighted fund for the city. And so on page sixty-seven, we have the budget-to-actual statement for the general fund. If you were to take a look at that, the revenues were a little bit below budget by one hundred thirty-six thousand, and expenditures were a little bit below budget, actually by about five hundred forty-seven thousand. Starting on page twenty-three are the footnotes, and the footnotes really are an integral part of the statements because it describes narratively a lot of the accounts, the major highlights of the financial statements. And again, the statements are a snapshot of June thirty-two thousand and eighteen, and the audit went well. Every year, not only do we issue the financial statements, but we also issue two letters to you. We issue what's called a internal control letter. Some people call it the management letter, but during the course of our audit, if any items came up that I felt needed to be communicated to you, it's called a reportable condition, I would put that in there because I, as your auditor, report to the governing board. During the course of our audit, there were two items that we, that are noted in there as material weaknesses. One was an overstatement recording of your capital assets, and that was described there. And then also, every year, when the city receives federal grant monies, the grant monies are summarized in a, it's called a SEFA, Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. And there was one grant left off on that. So those are two items that we just wanted to note to you. You know, the audit still went well, and the statements are such that you can rely on those. Also, every year, we issue another letter. It's called a Statement of One Fourteen letter, and that's kind of more, we highlight certain things. For instance, the use of estimates, or if there are any difficulties during the audit, we would note that in that letter. But the audit, you know, went well, and there was, and the audit, and the letter was very standard in nature. So that's the audit in a nutshell. The financial statements, the two letters, really are the product of the audit. And as your independent auditors, we really come in to give you more assurance that the amounts in those statements are correct, are materially correct, that you can make decisions on that. And so I want to thank you for inviting me here tonight, and I'm here to answer any questions if you might have it.
First of all, thank you for your reporting, your audit report, and that's good news, unmodified.
Yeah, that's what you want.
That's what we want, okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, too, as you see, this is something we haven't done in the past, but, you know, we are working back towards, on the Gruber report that we had done last year. We're trying to update and get more information out to the council and public. One thing that stood out, which I think needs clarification, is Rich talked about the seventy million dollars in assets we have. That's not cash. I think people know that, but I want to make sure, because about forty-five, forty-five million of that is our buildings, our trucks, our capital, things that we can't go and use and buy stuff for. There's about twelve million, which is far less than the hundred percent reserve the council of policy calls for that we're working on building. But I just want to make that clear, because when you hear we've got seventy million dollars in assets, some people think that's cash sitting in the bank, and it's not. But we are working on adhering to the council policy. We've been working on that very diligently, and again, thank Rich for coming down and presenting this this evening.
Very good.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
No questions, thank you very much.
Are we are looking for other means to put our money in to yield a higher return?
Yes, we are. In fact, our finance director is going to probably touch on that. She is going to present a quarterly report to you in a moment, something we, in the future, will probably be on the consent calendar, but this is the first one, and so she'll talk about that. But yes, she's been exploring all that, but back to this item, unless there's some other questions.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for inviting me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Let's hear about our quarterly general fund budget.
I'll just add again really quickly. This is, since this is the first time we've done this, I did want to have this as an open item for your information, but in the future, it will be on consent, and the stat sheet that's in the report will be prepared and updated quarterly for the council and public information. But tonight, our finance director will present a brief overview, and if there's any questions, we're available for questions.
The recommendation was receive and file, so if the council could take a motion on that, that would be great.
Okay, can we do that with unanimous consent?
I make a motion that we receive and file the annual financial report.
Right. So the motion has been made by Kearney, seconded by Osborne, that we receive the annual financial report. Is there a discussion on the motion? No. See you in the council.
Motion approved unanimously.
Thank you, madam. Okay, back to the quarterly general fund budget update. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. Our quarterly update is for the third quarter of the fiscal year, March thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, and it's basically giving you an overview of the general fund. We're three-fourths of the way through the year. Our revenue to date, sixty percent of it has come in. Our expenses, we've expended sixty-three percent of the budget to date. Getting into the revenues, the general fund makes up about fifty-five percent of our overall city revenues. Highlights in our revenue, sales and use taxes will come in more than what we budgeted due to Measure L coming in or being effective April first. There's a two-month lag on that. We won't actually see the money materialize until June, but we record it in the fiscal year that it's earned, so we will have three months of that for our fiscal year, so we're looking at maybe about another half a million that will come in over budget. Utility user taxes, the estimate was based on fiscal year seventeen, which was a little high from actuals. We're anticipating it'll be high for eighteen, I mean, for nineteen as well, about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. Property taxes, we'll see a little bit of extra money in there. Charges for services with rate increases for planning, building, and community center, that's coming in more as well. And then we're also going to have a gain for the sale of land this year, a gain about, it'll be over a million, that'll be in this fiscal year as well, and more than likely that'll be for next year's spending. As far as expenditures, we're on target. However, there's a couple budget units that are a little bit off. General operations, if you just look at the, I sectioned those out by departments, that's about ninety-seven percent of the budget, but that's because annual expenses have already been paid to date in one lump sum, some. Finance, due to the retirement of the director, is a little bit over budget as well. And then planning, building, administration, that has some transfer money relating to the sale as well. That wasn't put into the budget, so we just need to put a budget adjustment, transfer ins and outs between budgetary units. But as far as budget adjustments, I think there's a few that are needed, but I wanted to wait until I had the opportunity to meet with our department heads. This past week, I have met with them, so we will be putting together the actual numbers of adjustments and coming back our next meeting so that you can see what adjustments need to be made. Some things will need a little bit more funding. Revenue will be increased in a few instances for the fiscal year. So I'm hoping to get these to you on a quarterly basis so you'll have the information to make decisions. Any questions?
Okay, thank you for the report. Any questions?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you, Marla.
Could you speak to the issue that Councilmember Osborne rose about the higher yield in some of our investments? We kind of spoke about that in another conversation.
Okay.
Don't give away any trade secrets, but.
[laughing].
What did I say? What did I say? I said Osborne, no, I was looking at Kearney.
It's okay. As far as our investments, most of our money is sitting in non-interest-bearing accounts, unfortunately. So we have a large amount that we need to reinvest. We can either put it in money markets, or we can put it in government securities. That's what we're allowed to do. It has to be things that are low risk so that we don't lose money. So the current yield, we're looking at some of our investments, they'll yield over two percent is what we're looking at. If they yielded just two percent, we would be able to increase our investment earnings by two hundred thousand. So that's, we will be doing that. You should be seeing on your next investment report that we've actually invested some of the money so that we do have more money to use for the budget. Does that answer your question?
No, I want to thank you for looking into that for us. You've been here for, what, like, a month?
A month.
Already.
And I'm going strong, we're in the budget.
So far, we're in the budget. We're saving money, and we're going to get a higher return on our investments.
I hope I'm doing my job for you.
We like you.
Good.
Okay. And thank you, Councilman Pat Kearney, for bringing that issue up. Okay, is there any questions of the budget?
Nope. Do we need to do another vote on this?
We don't need to vote for that.
Just a regular receiving.
Okay, let's have, do we need a motion or consent? Let's have a motion for, okay, so Osborne and Kearney. I was looking right at you, I said Osborne. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Will the council please vote? Motion approved unanimously.
Okay, item number ten. Item number ten is appointment to the City Planning Commission. I don't think we need a report for this.
Is the person here?
No, she had to, either she didn't get the appointment, I mean, the notice, or she still had to work late tonight, but she'll come to the next meeting. At this point, I'm going to appoint, with the support of the council, the following individuals to the Landale Planning Commission to fill the last vacant seat, and that's Carla L. Rose Pryor. Some of you might be familiar with her. She works for the Los Angeles Air Force Base and has been like our point person on our Memorial Day events. If you don't know her from other activities, obviously, she lives here in the City of Landale as well, and has so for some years, not many, exactly how many years, but.
Five.
Five years. And that would be my appointment to the Landale Planning Commission. So just want to look for a motion to ratify the mayor's appointee to the Landale Planning Commission.
So moved.
Okay, so it's been moved by, what did you say your name is again? Brendan, okay. Moved by Reed and seconded by Kearney?
Yeah.
Okay, will the council please vote? Okay, thank you, and thanks for the support. I keep losing my pen, but anyway. Okay, item number eleven, the budget list of projects.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, this is a report for you to approve, the list of projects for our SB one funding in the city. As you know, SB one was signed in twenty seventeen. One of the requirements for the city to receive the funding for our projects is to present a list of projects to the city council and that you approve that list of projects. In Exhibit A of the staff report, there are four projects listed. They total a little over a half million dollars. We have Freeman Avenue from one fifty-fourth to Marine, Gravilla from one sixty-seventh to one fifty-ninth, One Fifty-Ninth Street from Gravilla to Pomona, and One Sixtieth from Gravilla to, it says cul-de-sac, that doesn't make sense to me. I'm not sure about that. I'll double-check that, but anyway, it's a fifteen thousand dollar project. It's a small one. It's probably, I guess it must be one sixty to the end of the cul-de-sac there. Anyway, these projects are all estimated to be completed in two thousand and twenty, and the list is presented to you for your approval. There are two requested actions. One is to approve the resolution, number nineteen oh four dash oh two-three, approving the list, and also that, number two, the council directs staff to include the additional funding necessary for these projects in the upcoming budget.
I'm glad you have Freeman on that list. I drove that today, and his potholes from one end to the other.
We've been patching them, but they need repair.
It's a bumpy ride.
Well, if we have to have SB one, we might as well get our roads improved as a result of such, so.
Good idea.
Right, so, since we're stuck with it for the moment.
I'll make a motion to prove.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Osborne that we, for both, to do both.
And second.
And seconded by councilwoman Sora as. Is there any debate on the motion, any? Will the council please vote? Will the council please vote?
Motion approved unanimously.
Thank you. Next item, items from the mayor and council members, report of any meetings, events that they would like to share with us.
I don't think the only meeting I had was today for our groundbreaking on the Inglewood Boulevard project. I just look forward to seeing everyone at the Easter egg hunt on Sunday, or Saturday, sorry, Saturday.
This Saturday?
Be there early. These kids are experts. It starts at 10:00, and it's over at 10:02.
Yeah, yeah, you hear that? It's over at 10:02. That's, that's literally.
Yeah, it was.
Yes, Mr. Pat Kearney.
Okay.
Councilman.
I have several. I attended the Lobby Trust and Oversight Committee meeting with, we met the new sheriff. He kind of slighted Landale about the panel for the captain, so I made him aware of it. Told him we're not, the city's not a stepchild. We are a city. So I hope he got on the wrong side of the bed, but you know, it's okay, I don't care. The city manager and I was on the panel for the electing, or selecting, nominating a new captain for the Southwest Station and our service station. We put in three good selections. The sheriff picked the one, which is the captain, Allen now. Don't forget, like Dan said, Easter egg hunt is Saturday, Easter is Sunday, next Wednesday, the Youth of Government Day, and the following Saturday is the Landale Youth Day Parade. And I also attended the groundbreaking ceremony with four of the five colleagues, and with that, I'll pass it on.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you for that clarification. Yes, ma'am.
Unfortunately, I was at work, but other than that, I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pat Kearney.
Everybody mixed up. Yeah, Pat covered it all. I mean, there's the groundbreaking, and the parade is coming up and everything else, nothing else.
Okay, the only thing I attended is, Pat indicated, the groundbreaking for the much-awaited Inglewood Road Improvement Project. This project's been underway for, what, I don't know how many years? Twelve years. About 12 years, and, you know, the wheels of government kind of goes a little slow, because we've got a lot of agencies we have to work with, you know, City of Redondo Beach, and Hawthorne, and Metro, and, but it's sooner. We finally got it done, and we did the groundbreaking, and like, it's going to be a little inconvenience for folks in that area. I did have to surprise my wife of that, you know, like, you think traffic is bad over there now, it's going to be a little inconvenience. Just want to let you know, you know, because right by the high school in that area. But it's going to be a much appreciated improvement, I can guarantee you, right after it's done, you know. Sometimes improvements, I always like to say, you know, when people say it's inconvenient, I say, well, progress, a lot of times, is inconvenience. You know, you're going to be inconvenienced by progress a lot of times. And I can guarantee you, once the road work is completed, you will appreciate, and you forget all about the inconvenience, and you appreciate the fact that you can turn left heading east on Marine. As one of the other things that you enjoy as well, improving that area. So I just want to thank the staff for keeping that on the front burner on the menu, because 12 years, I mean, it could easily slip off the radar, and I want to thank you guys for that. Okay, with that, that's all I have. Now, we do have a closed session. We have a closed session concerning the public employee performance evaluation. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give the provisions of the closed session.
The city council will be in closed session to discuss the performance evaluation of an employee pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B. Thank you.
Okay, we're staying in recess. Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give the report for the closed session.
The city council met in closed session on one item, as identified as item J13. The council was updated, no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Landale City Council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, May 6th. In these council chambers, we are adjourned at 7:42.